Should I start? Good evening. I called to order the York County School Board meeting for October 28th, 2024. With just a few months, excuse me, with just a few days remaining in October, we're about to enter busy holiday season. As we wrap up our first quarter, there are so many amazing things happening with our students in the classrooms. Tonight, we will take the opportunity to celebrate several of those achievements. I'd like to welcome Dr. Carol to the dais this evening as Dr. Shandor is at a conference. So, thank you, Dr. Carol, for holding down the fort this evening. I would now like to share the YCSD mission statement. The mission of your county school division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. At this time, will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Now, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Soraya Lucen, a second grader at TAB Elementary. Soraya is a second grader at TAB Elementary. She loves math, but her favorite times of day are recess and lunch. She always tries her best in school. Soraya participates in cheer at football games and loves cheering during halftime. Soraya's classmates say that she is a kind and caring friend. Please stand as Soraya leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now recognize our seniors of the month for each school. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family members while we hear about your accomplishments. Okay, the first one we have is Bruton High School, and Mr. Schaefer will tell you about him.
Go ahead and stand up, Jackson. Oh, both of you now. You don't get out of this here. It was with great enthusiasm that Bruton High School recognizes Jackson Evans as senior of the month. Jackson is an extraordinary young man who has demonstrated a keen dedication to both academic excellence and community involvement throughout his high school years. His commitment to academics is complemented by his ability to balance a multitude of extracurricular commitments, from being selected to attend Boy's State, to his active participation in math and science honor societies, the speech and debate team, Green Club, and Key Club, where he served as president during his sophomore year. Jackson's involvement in these activities not only showcases his leadership skills, but also his ability to foster a sense of community and collaboration among his peers. Jackson's future goal is to study engineering at a four-year college or university. Congratulations, Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our Grafton High School Senior of the Month, and Mr. Pyavich will tell us about our student.
Yes, I would like to ask Ethan Fawn to stand up and his family. Thank you. Grafton High is thrilled to announce Ethan Fawn as our October Senior of the Month. Ethan embodies the spirit of Grafton with his unwavering enthusiasm and dedication. Since his sophomore year, he was served as a class officer, playing a key role in organizing numerous school events, including carnivals, pep rallies, and the first annual pickleball tournament. Last year, he took the lead in planning a fantastic junior prom, creating an unforgettable experience for his classmates. Ethan truly loves Grafton High School and works daily to make it a better place. He's also an exceptional student, consistently challenging himself to be the hardest-working in the room. His dedication to his studies has earned him an impressive 4.6 GPA, and he is excited to have applied to prestigious schools including MIT, Brown, Wilman Mary, and the University of Pennsylvania. We are so proud of Ethan and grateful for his vital contributions to Grafton High School. Congratulations, Ethan.
Our next senior of the month is from TAB High School, and Ms. Fairman will tell us about her senior.
Thank you. Could I have Om Pingalkar stand and his family? Wonderful. TAB High School is pleased to announce Om Pingalkar as our Senior of the Month for October. Om has consistently demonstrated exceptional academic and extracurricular achievements throughout his years at TAB. He currently attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology, where he enriches his knowledge and skills in engineering. From ninth to eleventh grade, he earned recognition for the highest academic honors, showcasing his intelligence and dedication to his academic endeavors. His leadership skills emerged only when he was inducted into the National Beta Club in 10th grade, acknowledging his outstanding character and achievements. By 11th grade, he became a member of the National Honor Society, further solidifying his commitment to academics and leadership. In extracurricular activities, he has served as the backstage manager and lead technician for many of TAB High School's drama productions. He was elected Student Council Class President twice, successfully organizing various events and fundraisers. As the executive president of the Student Council this year, he continues to lead with charisma and positivity. A dedicated varsity swimmer and team captain, Om also volunteered as a junior coach, receiving a sportsmanship award for his character. Om's commitment to community service is evident through his tutoring, involvement with the Peninsula Indian Community Association, and leadership in drama productions. His dedication to academic excellence and contributions to both his school and the local community make him an outstanding candidate for Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Om.
And I have the privilege of telling you about our York High School Senior of the Month, Olivia Horak. Would you please stand and your family? York High School is excited to announce our October Senior of the Month, Olivia Horak. Olivia is a hardworking student and has served as SCA class president for the past three years, which highlights her strong leadership skills and commitment to her classmates. Outside of school, Olivia volunteers at several homeless shelters in Hampton Roads, showcasing her passion for helping those in need. She also shadows at Seaford Veterinary Clinic, where she learns how to care for animals. The experience combined with her love for pets is helping her prepare for a future career in veterinary medicine. In addition to her volunteer work, she's a member of the YHS lacrosse team and plays for Hampton Roads Lacrosse League. She is also an active member of the YHS bowling team and placed second in Virginia's Bowling Championship. She balances sports with her academic pursuits as a member of the YHS National Honor Society, National Art Society, Art Honor Society, YHS Latin Honor Society, and the YHS Green Team. Her hard work and dedication are inspiring, and she truly embodies the spirit of our school. Congratulations, Olivia. We look forward to all the amazing things that you will do. Dr. Carol's making his way down to the front for our next round of recognitions. We will be combining our award recipients according to their school, so I will ask Ms. Beth Welch, TAB Elementary Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared about both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for TAB Elementary. First, we have our Student Service Award recipient, Kendall Puckett. Ms. Fairman, would you please tell us about Kendall as she comes up front?
I sure will. Kendall has been a student at TAB Elementary School since kindergarten and is now a fifth grader in Mrs. Santa Spurtz's class. Her favorite subject is math, mostly, and she loves how the environment at TAB is calm and quiet. She also loves how the grade levels work to do things together outside of the classroom. This year, Kendall is a news anchor on the TAB Elementary School Morning News Show. The exciting part about the news show this year is it no longer is done over the announcements. It is recorded each day for the entire school to watch. When Kendall is not on the news and working hard in school, she is busy with various extracurricular activities. Kendall is an assistant teacher at her dance studio. She helps facilitate Chance to Dance, which gives students with disabilities an opportunity to learn to dance. Kendall also is on the leadership team at Taekwondo. In this role, Kendall helps the teacher and occasionally leads the class. We are proud of Kendall and all she does in and outside of school to serve others. Thank you, Kendall.
Our TAB Volunteer of the Month is not able to make it this evening, so we can recognize her maybe at a later date. Now, I'll ask Mr. Aaron Dodge, Grafton Middle School ACC, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the Student Service Award recipient and the Volunteer of the Month for Grafton Middle School. We have two Student Service Award recipients for the month for Grafton Middle, Ashlyn Barker and Zoe Anthony. Zoe is actually unable to be with us this evening because she is volunteering. We will recognize her at next month's board meeting. Mr. Pyavich, would you please tell us about Ashlyn as she comes up front?
Yes, I will. Ashlyn Baker, a dedicated eighth-grade student at Grafton Middle School, is being honored for her service to school and her community. As part of a military family, Ashlyn values the importance of service and has proudly raised and lowered the school and state flags each day since sixth grade, even braving the coldest mornings when the rope freezes to the pole. In addition to her flag duties, Ashlyn serves as an altar server, assisting the priest both in America and during her summer visits to her grandparents in Ireland. She also volunteers with the school's military liaison and is an active Clipper Ambassador, helping new students feel at home. Ashlyn's passion for service continues to inspire others, and she looks forward to continuing her contributions as a high schooler next year. We are thrilled to recognize Ashlyn for her dedication and service. Great job, Ashlyn. Thank you.
The Volunteer of the Month for Grafton Middle School is Ms. Catherine Gullidge. Ms. Gullidge, would you please join Dr. Carol and Ms. Anthony up front?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Pyavich, would you please introduce Ms. Gullidge?
I will. Catherine Gullidge is a dedicated parent of Grafton Middle School, is being recognized for her outstanding volunteer work and contribution to our school community. Over the past four years, Mrs. Gullidge has been a consistent present at Grafton, supporting the school as her children, Landon and Lily, have attended. Humble and hardworking, Mrs. Gullidge often comes in, does the work, and leaves without seeking recognition. As a member of the PTSA, she has served in multiple roles, including committee chair and now president, stepping in wherever she is needed, from decorating the school to leading important initiatives. Her daughter Lily expressed deep pride in her mother's work and hopes to follow in her footsteps, saying her mom was tough and taught her importance of giving back to helping others. Mrs. Gullidge's selfless service has made a lasting impact on our community, and we are grateful for all she has done for Grafton Middle School. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gavin from Grafton High School, Principal, will now come up front for Grafton High Student Service Award for the month of September. We are going to recognize Elena Malmstrom. Elena was unable to attend last month's meeting, so we are very happy that she could be here this evening to be recognized. Elena came to the front while Mr. Elena, excuse me, please come to the front while Mr. Richardson tells us about you.
Thank you. Well, Grafton High School proudly honors Elena Malmstrom as the 2024 Student Service Award winner. Elena's drive to help others and her exceptional leadership have made a significant impact. As a member of the Spanish Honor Society, she spearheaded the Pulsera Project, raising over $1,000 for Central American artists. Additionally, through the Leadership Club, she organized a fundraiser for the less homeless organization by selling bracelets. This year, Elena will play a crucial role in restructuring all student advisory groups to improve the Grafton Zone. Her commitment to service and her desire to make her school a better place reflect her dedication and passion. Congratulations, Elena. Good job.
Okay, we'll have a little presentation from the York Foundation for Public Education. Mr. Schaefer, I'll let you go ahead and tell us about this presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Terry Mock, who is a new trustee to the York Foundation for Public Education. If you would like to be one, you can too. Just talk to him, okay? Just a shameless plug there. Okay, he's going to assist Dr. Carol as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Soraya Lucen, a second grader from TAB Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's student award recipients. Kendall Puckett from TAB Elementary School, Ashlyn Barker and Zoe Anthony from Grafton Middle School, and Elena Malmstrom from Grafton High School. Okay, we also congratulate our seniors of the month. Jackson Evans from Bruton High School. Ethan Fawn from Grafton High School. Om Pingalkar, there we are, yeah, from TAB High School, and Olivia Horak from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Join me in congratulating all our award recipients.
I'd like to invite at this time Ms. Nagel and Ms. Vandergriff from Seaford Elementary School, and Ms. Welch and Ms. Goodson from TAB Elementary School to the front. We are pleased to announce that Seaford Elementary and TAB Elementary have both received the highest achievement award from the Virginia Board of Education 2024-2025 Exemplar Performance Awards. This year, 92 schools earned this recognition. The awards are based on performance during the 2023-2024 school year. To receive this award, Seaford Elementary and TAB Elementary had to meet state benchmarks in reading and math, 75% for reading and 70% for math. Both schools also had to meet a certain threshold for the achievement gap, as well as a chronic absenteeism rate of 15% or lower. Congratulations to Seaford Elementary and TAB Elementary. Okay, at this time, we're going to talk about the Virginia School Board Association Academy Awards, and I'm going to let Dr. Carol share some information about that.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on points earned from July 1st through June 30, and the awards being presented tonight are, first of all, an award of excellence and silver pin to Mr. Richardson, and he already has those. An award of achievement and bronze pin to Dr. Shandor. An award of recognition for Mr. Schaefer. And I'll make sure Dr. Shandor gets his certificate and pin.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to have our accent on academics. Dr. Carol, would you like to share about this presentation?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Ms. Sherri Vandergriff back up to the podium. She's the assistant principal at Seaford Elementary School, and she's going to kick off our accent on academics featuring student advisory groups.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Carol, in YCSD schools, student advisory groups empower students to collaborate with school leadership, providing feedback and facilitating solutions on key issues. By sharing their perspectives, students engage in decision-making and serve on various committees, which enhances their motivation and academic performance. Students from Grafton High School and Seaford Elementary advisory groups are excited to present their achievements from the past year and outline their goals for the upcoming school year. I'd like to welcome Seaford Elementary School and then Grafton High School.
Thank you. The development of our current student advisory board actually began in October of 2023 for third through fifth grade students, and in February of 2024 for kindergarten through second grade students. Classroom teachers recommended one student from each class to serve as their representative. The students met with school administrators twice a month, sometimes more, to share what was working well, discuss concerns, brainstorm solutions to problems, and share ideas to make our school even better. They were responsible for sharing the discussions with their classes during morning or class meetings. They practiced public speaking, active listening, and created presentations. The older students served as mentors for the younger students, and at the end of the year, returning students expressed a strong desire to remain on the student advisory board. This year, Seaford has expanded the student advisory board to include those who were in it last year, along with new representatives. Presently, we are developing student advisory committees, which will allow students to focus on specific initiatives identified by the advisory board to improve school safety, attendance, communication, student connections, and family engagement. Earlier this month, student advisors in fourth and fifth grade created presentations and led presentations for kindergarten, first, and second grade students during our town meetings. These focused on expectations for behavior and school safety. First and second grade advisors are writing and recording weekly announcements for families. All advisors will have continued opportunities for collaboration, problem-solving, communication, and making connections with the entire school community. It is my pleasure now to introduce and highlight some of our advisors from Seaford Elementary. We'll begin with Mila Tyree.
Good evening. My name is Mila Tyree, and I am in the fourth grade. Student advisory has helped me to have a lot more confidence to speak up in front of people. In the past, speaking in public made me very anxious. I still get a little anxious, but I get through it. I know I have a lot of great ideas to share, and I can help the school be safe and fine. Being a student advisor makes me feel like I'm part of the school, not just in a school.
Good evening. My name is Ronit Desai, and I am in the fifth grade. I like being a student advisor because before I was in student advisory, I was just a normal kid who was very shy, and I was new to Seaford in the third grade. And I was not involved in the school, and I did not feel like my ideas were valued. As a student advisor, I now have a reputation to hold up. People see me now as a leader, and for the first time in my life, I see myself as a leader. I am proud of my reputation. Being a leader who helps others makes me feel happy. When I grow up, I hope to own my own company. The skills I am learning as a student advisor will help me reach this goal.
Good evening. My name is, oh, wait. Good evening. My name is Rocco Montini, and I am in the fifth grade. Having a student advisory board has had a positive impact on our school. We have added more recess equipment, showcased STEM to our community during alumni night, found solutions to make the cafeteria even better, and helped to present school safety presentations for our town meetings. We represent our classes to share what is going well and what needs our attention. The most important thing we do is work together to make our school better. Being a student advisor has helped me develop leadership skills that I will use in the future. When I grow up, I would like to own my own business with a focus on outdoor equipment, supplies, and sports.
One quote that resonated that I feel encompasses what we're about, our why for student advisory, is from a quote from the Harvard Graduate School of Education, one of their publications. "When schools give students the agency and the tools to speak out, the effects can resonate across students' lives. Reforms initiated with student input are likely to improve the learning environment for all students, not just those involved in the reforms." It's now my pleasure to introduce Grafton High School.
Good evening, Dr. Carol, Ms. Goodwin, board members. I am Steve Gavin, the very proud principal of Grafton High School. I am joined tonight by Ms. Jarrett, and we're going to talk to you about a program that developed through the concerns that the student expressed to us during student advisory. Last year, one of the concerns they came up with is that they wanted to find a way that we could reach out to the zone schools and make an impact. And we do a great job of doing things such as trunk-or-treat or carnivals, but the students really wanted to find a way to get into the classroom, make an impact. So, through that, the Grafton Friends program was formed. Grafton Friends is a partnership between the three elementary schools, the middle school, and about 25 students who weekly make visits into these classrooms, have a tremendous impact on the kids, and I think it has quite the impact on them, too. So, I probably talked enough, and you don't want to hear from me anyway, so I'm going to let you hear from our three students.
Hello, school board. I am Sloane Roberts, and I help Ms. Lewis's fifth-grade class at Grafton Bethel Elementary School. Grafton Friends has helped me build the connection with the zone of Grafton High School by Grafton High School being able to show off their star students to go through a similar path, such as I have, a Grafton Bethel alumni, building that connection with the kids either through Gaga Ball or convincing kids to come to a Grafton High School football game to watch me perform during the Grafton Band halftime show, which is a tall order knowing Grafton Football's record. Kids look forward to working with me from the change of pace between someone compared to me to an actual adult, where I could lead by example and act as a role model. Overall, my perspective has changed for Grafton Friends, where I initially had no interest in helping younger kids, where I now look forward to every single opportunity to have these little kids, and I am grateful and blessed for the opportunity I've been given through this program, and thank you for listening.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kevin Lee. I've had the privilege to be able to work with Darryl Elementary. Inside, I work with kids with multiple disabilities. I range, I work, I help in ranges of simple sanitation to laminating papers in order to assist my teacher in allowing more time to focus with their students. I'm proud to say that I'm a role model in the classroom. My students no longer shy away from other kids on the playground and instead look forward to playing with them. The kids I work with have extremely changed my perspective. Truth be told, I didn't know exactly what to expect when I first walked into a classroom, but I now, with my whole heart, I would like to say that I wouldn't have wanted to have it any other way.
My name is Adam Schuster, and first and foremost, I would like to thank the entire school board, Ms. Jarrett and Mr. Gavin, for giving School Board, Ms. Jarrett and Mr. Gavin for giving me this opportunity to work with the Grafton Friends Program. Working with these students, working with these students has not only changed my own individual perspective, but has also helped me become a better leader. My communication skills have vastly improved when it comes to talking to people who come from different perspectives and backgrounds, so much so that I've included it in one of my college essays, as I have truly believed that it has made that big of an impact on me. Not only have I become a better leader, but I get real enjoyment and pleasure out of working with these kids. I enjoy seeing progress in these students, and I am in infinite debt and gratitude to the teens who helped me when I was their age in growing my social skills and ability through the Book Buddies Program. I am now reinvesting their kindness to help these students grow, and I am forever grateful for the opportunity to do so. I am also forever grateful for the opportunity to ask Ms. Player, my teacher, some questions about the Grafton Friends Program, and the video will play right now.
Your Grafton Friends student has an impact in your class, and if so, how?
Definitely. The third graders are really excited to show their work to him, and when they're able to help him to help other students, they all really like that.
What has your Grafton Friend done to help you in your class?
So we have a third grade student who is very well behaved. He's very quiet, and he doesn't always advocate for himself, but he does need some support. And I know he doesn't love it when I sit next to him and help out so much, and when our Grafton Friend is there, it's more like, instead of getting help from the teacher, he gets support from a high schooler. And so he likes that a lot, and I know that's our one time that we can make him feel really special during the week.
Is there anything you would change about Grafton Friends if given the chance?
We really appreciate the program. I would wish that they could come more frequently, but I know that they're high school students, and they have other things to do as well.
What growth have you seen in students working with Grafton Friends?
Definitely a confidence booster, especially for this third grade student I mentioned earlier, who needs a lot of support, and that's been huge for us.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see, the Grafton Friends Program has had a big impact on our whole zone, and it all comes from one goal. We want to show every kid in our zone and make sure they understand that every day is a great day to be a Clipper. Thank you, guys, and I'll take any questions you may have.
So I just have one question for the high schoolers from Grafton. Not to make a commitment or anything, but has that made you think about maybe a teaching career, this experience?
Actually, the kids have asked me that, and I, I think about it from time to time, but I don't think, if I was in like a similar role, I would definitely teach older kids. They're a little much at times, and Ms. Lewis definitely takes a lot, and just any elementary school teacher takes a lot for just like the things that they do for this community.
Good deal. Good deal. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, I have a question for you. When you came up and you said that your perception, your perspective changed, what was your aha moment when that happened?
Um, I would say probably like my first day, just like being able to go back to where I used to be, like my old stomping grounds of Grafton Bethel Elementary School. Definitely was a big game changer, just watching how like the school has changed even from when I used to be there, and just like my first day being there, and just like, just being in that classroom again, which was a former one of my classrooms, and being able to, just the change in perspective from me being more of a teacher now instead of the student talking and being disruptive, which is definitely very different from my fifth grade experience.
Have you noticed how small chairs are in there?
Yeah. I've walked back in the class or in the hallways, and it's much, much smaller than it was before.
Those desks, very little. Just want to tell you guys, my experience through, actually even middle schoolers, when I was young, I started the same thing in leadership roles, and that led me on a path of business where I'm at right now, even in this role that I'm serving. It's a great opportunity to do what you guys do, starting in business that, young, thinking about it, that's something else. But also for you guys in high school, just invest in your time in the children. I know people that were older than me, my peers, that invested in me. It just meant so much to me. It was more than a teacher, actually, because he was like my friend. He's somebody that I look up to, and he was not that older, but it seemed very old to me at that time. So just kudos to you guys for doing this and stepping up to that role. Just, it's going to get you far in life, in a comfort zone that you're going to get out through the college and your careers, knowing that you can actually teach somebody some values and bring them up into society. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. One of our main priorities is, you know, giving back to the community that we've grown up in and really, you know, paying it forward for what they've done to us.
I just want to add to Mr. Richardson's point. While this program has never made me consider being a teacher, it has certainly made me consider being a coach as, as I play soccer, and that is something I am much more knowledgeable in. And the sheer joy I get out of these aha moments with these kids is just something like invaluable, and you can't get any, you can't, there's no other feeling like in the world, and coaching and teaching is like the only we can get that feeling. So this program has made me like deeply consider becoming a coach in the future.
The question that I have is both for the high school students as well as the elementary students. How would you convince one of your classmates or say someone in the, the next grade moving up to where you are now to participate in this?
Would you say that again, please? I'm sorry.
There we go. What?
Would you say that again, please?
Sure will. What could you tell one of your classmates or say someone in the grade below you who's moving up and maybe participating in this next year? What would you say to them, you know, to encourage their activity with this?
Maybe like just help other people, like encourage them and do what, like what I'm doing right now and what all the other people are doing, like just try your best and work hard and just be kind.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments from the others?
So I would just say that help others, and if there's a shelter nearby you, go help them, like give them food, water, and clothes. That's what I would tell them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would say in order to get more students involved, I would talk about the, the value that this community has had on us, because giving back, I mean, I grew up here. I've been here since three years old. You know, I've, I've lived in this community for so long, and to be able to give back, especially, especially to a elementary school that I, you know, I went to K through five through, it's just, it means a lot.
So I just have a comment, or actually a question, I guess, for the seniors here that are working with the younger kids. You must feel like, it must feel like you're a rock star when you walk into that classroom. Those kids' faces light up like you are the rock star from the day. That must feel good.
Yeah. It feels great. I mean, I work with kids with special needs, and it's, it's, they don't get a lot of time with others, and it's, it's a good to have a new face in there every once in a while, and I see them light up, and it just warms my heart.
My teacher, Ms. Lewis, always like before I leave for like just her class and everything, she always lets me know that like her, like her kids' weeks are made every single time I go back into their class, and I'm only there for like two or three hours, just to see them and just like the small like engagement I do get. But like it, she lets me know every single time, and even when I played Gaga Ball, that was like the best thing to them.
I wouldn't say rock star is the right term to put on us, but I'd say just a friend, because that's just what, that's what I want to be to these, to these kids. I don't want to, you know, be like the rock star that they all hail to. I just want to be a good role model and a friend to these kids.
Well, I think it's an excellent thing that you're doing, and talk to your fellow students and encourage them to, to keep that going, because that is truly something very, very special.
Thank you.
At this time, the Board's going to take a short recess to meet with the award recipients and their families. All right, we will now reconvene the meeting. Before I open up for public comments, I will share some remarks. The School Board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the School Board. The School Board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask the speakers to address their comments to the entire School Board and not one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, or one filling in for the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments at the podium. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The yellow light will come on that indicates you have about 20 seconds to finish up. The timer will begin after you state your name and district. Now, with that said, I just want to emphasize a couple things, okay? A little bit different, first of all, why have a policy if you're not going to adhere to the policy? And I think we've been pretty lenient in the past with some things that have happened at the podium and letting people continue, but moving forward, okay? You do not address individual board members. Just address the board as a whole. You don't have to name names of people, okay? More importantly, we're not doing yelling. There's no yelling, no posturing, okay? We're not going to be aggressive up here. There's no need for that, all right? We all can practice civil discord. So what will happen, and I don't, I'm hoping that I don't have to do this, but you know, if you do violate one of those rules, I'll give you a warning. If you do it again, I'm going to stop the time, okay? And you're done, but I will give you another opportunity at the end to do it again, okay? And like I said, I'm only doing this because it's the right thing to do. It's our policy. It's a good policy, and we want to model how to have a discussion or, you know, state what, what we want to state without the aggression or hostility and all those other kinds of things, okay? So with that said, I will call up our first speaker, and that is Danielle Cousins.
Hello, my name is Danielle Cousins. I'm from District Two, and I'm speaking today on regards of Governor Youngkin's revision policy, that it's great the way it is, let's not make any changes to it. I did have a passage here I wanted to read to you guys today, if you don't mind. Exodus 20, the Ten Commandments. "You shall not have any other gods before me; you shall not make yourself an idol of any likeness, of anything above heaven, or on the earth, or in the water under the earth. You shall not worship any other gods besides me; for the Lord your God, I am a jealous God. You shall not take the Lord's name in vain; for the Lord God will not leave him unpunished who takes his name in vain. Remember the Sabbath day and keep it holy; for in six days the Lord made the heavens and the earth, and the sea and all that is in it. And he rested on the seventh day; therefore the Lord bless the Sabbath day and keep it holy. Honor your mother and your father; and your days shall be long on the earth, and the Lord will bless you and keep you. Thou shall not murder; thou shall not commit adultery; thou shall not steal; thou shall not bear false witness against your neighbor. You shall not covet your neighbor's house, wife, or other things that they belong to." I thank you for this opportunity today. I just wanted to remind everybody that this York Town was founded, was the last Battle of the Revolutionary War, that we have freedom of speech in this country, we have freedom to practice our religion, and some of these laws that are trying to be passed, try to, try to quiet the voices of believers and come against our morals and what we believe to our God. And I just want to mention that other countries, Christians are getting martyred, their heads are getting decapitated by people of other religions, that they won't renounce the name of Jesus, and some of these policies and things that you're trying, I won't say you personally, but that are trying to be implemented to help a small number of people are really violating the rights of others and their beliefs. And like I said, I love all people, and I pray for them. I pray against a spirit of suicide, depression, just gender confusion in Jesus' name. I bless everyone here, and I thank you, Holy Spirit be present in this room. Amen.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is, let me see, Tiffany, is it Huntsler? Okay.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Huntsler. I'm not sure what district I'm in. My kids go to Grafton. I'm just here representing as a parent. My kids have been in Grafton since my daughter was little, and she's now 16. I have a son in the elementary school. I found out that here you guys are going to talk about the revision of Youngkin's law that allows, would essentially allow any gender to come into the children's bathrooms that they choose fit. My son is seven. He's afraid to go into the men's bathroom. Anywhere he goes, as a, as a boy, he is still afraid to go to the boys' bathroom because he's afraid of what the adult men will do. You guys pass this law into his school that will allow whatever gender they choose fit to go into whatever bathroom they want, and he's going to be afraid to use the restroom. My daughter is going to be afraid to use the restroom at school, a basic body function that they need, and they're going to be afraid to go. And that, as a parent, that upsets me and that concerns me. They should be safe to go to their own bathrooms, girls and girls, boys and boys. God created us with two genders, and we need to stick with it, and we need to keep our kids safe in their basic body functions. So just, thank you.
Our next speaker is Russell Evenson.
Good evening, York County School Board. Thank you for the honor, the privilege that we get to address you. I also would like to make some comments on the proposed revisions that are going to be considered that in the distant future.
Point of honor, Madam Chair, what is the name and the district?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Russell Evenson from District Four. Excuse me. Thank you.
Excuse me. Point of order, Madam Chair. Only the board members are members of the School Board, that the audience is not to be standing and making comments regarding other speakers. Thank you, and that's standard Roberts Rules of Order. Thank you. Go ahead and continue.
I am Russell Evenson from District Four in Grafton. I am here to make some comments about the proposed changes that are being considered with the transgender laws and the codes that are there. Kendall, one of the students, said that she enjoys the calmness and the quiet of classroom. I know that today's school system and today's schools, and thank God, York County, I believe, is a good school system. You guys, all these students, wonderful programs that are going on, and every time I've ever come here or watched online, it is how good York County is, and we all know that. And I'd like to see it kept that way, kept it calm, kept it quiet, kept the confusion out of classroom. I think kids are confused enough about things today. Thank God for the wonderful programs that you do have. I'd like for you to continue to adhere to and follow the Virginia Department of Education guidelines that have been already approved for the state of Virginia, because it really legally protects everybody. It gives everybody a non-discrimination effect in protecting everybody. So my word to you tonight is just, please continue with that, encourage it. Any proposed changes, you don't have to do it, so please don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Connie Elmore.
Good evening, Connie Elmore. I do not live in York County. Well, I do live in York County, but in Pecosa, but I have grandchildren that attend Seaford Elementary. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had a conversation with a student that attends a high school here in the district, and last, last month I shared with you one issue that concerned me, and I really, I just wanted to say I appreciate the res- to say I appreciate the response from several staff members that reached out to me, and thank you for taking action to ensure our schools' librarians don't participate in banned book week. Tonight I wanted to speak to you about another issue that came from that conversation. The student that I spoke with told me that pride flags and pride ally stickers are displayed by teachers in her school, on their doors and in the classrooms. She also shared that she's asked over and over about her sexual orientation by other students, and that on the school bus she has had days where, maybe just one day, where students on the bus have chanted together "Pride Ally." If indeed teachers are allowed to display the items that I described, I think that that's helping, I know that that is helping to create an atmosphere where students think that discussing or even focusing on their sexuality is appropriate for the school setting. God has given every parent the right to raise their children up in the way that they should go regarding these highly personal matters, it's not the right or the responsibility of the school system or their employees. Our schools should prioritize academics. York County Schools wants to prioritize maximizing student potential. In order to do that, every student should feel normal within the walls of their school, they should feel welcome to be treated fairly. Some will label what I'm saying as hate speech, I don't hate anybody, I don't hate those within the LGBTQ community. In fact, my heart broke as I've heard people at this school board meeting and other city school board meetings share how they've been treated growing up in school systems. But thankfully, we have legislation and policies in place to prevent and handle bullying and mistreatment in our schools. I say, let's work those policies, and let's continue to make sure that every student is accepted and feels safe. I'd also like to state that the non-discrimination policies as they're written cover every student. By adding the recommended verbiage, it focuses on one specific group, and I believe that places a higher priority on them, or could, and that that's in direct opposition to what we want those policies to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Tammy Dearberger.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Carroll. I'm a homeowner in District Two. I viewed the October 14, 2024, school board session online. There are two items on that agenda I would like to speak to tonight. First, I'm thankful for the school safety presentation and discussion. I applaud York County School District and Sheriff Montgomery along with his staff for making the safety of the students and staff a priority. Second is the Policy A discussion, specifically adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the non-discrimination policy. The current policy reads, for those that might not know or be watching online, "The school board is committed to non-discrimination with regard to sex, gender, race, color, ethnic or national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, age, marital status, genetic information, or any other characteristic protected by law. This commitment prevails in all of its policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs and services, and individuals and entities with whom the board does business." As you can see, discrimination based on sex or gender are already covered in this policy. It was stated during the meeting that it doesn't change the way we are operating, it's just being specific in the policies. I'm concerned that including this language could potentially lead to changes in your current operations. I'm asking you to not insert special protections for sexual orientation and gender identity into school code, because all students are already covered and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Natasha Cleves, if I said that right?
Good evening, my name is Natasha Cleves, and I'm from District Four. I am speaking as a parent of two young girls, and I'm here to say that I would like you to protect parental rights, student safety, and religious freedoms until now.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Waldron, is that right?
Good evening, my name is Jonathan, I am the Director of Speak Up Peninsula, which is a grassroots organization that represents the interests of parents in Yorktown, Newport News, Pecosin, Hampton, Williamsburg, and Jamestown. I'm here tonight to give comment on and oppose a portion of the changes being considered for the policy manual tonight, specifically the addition of gender identity and sexual orientation to the non-discrimination section. To be clear, every person deserves to be protected regardless of background, beliefs, or creed. However, there are already numerous laws on the books which make this abundantly clear, both at the state and local level. I think Ms. Connie and Ms. Tammy stated it excellently, that all students are already currently protected. You might ask, why, if there are already protections in place at the local and state level, what's the big deal with adding the wordage here? The answer is pretty simple, actions like these have a proven track record of having utterly failed to do anyone any good anywhere. And if you can work a mouse and a keyboard, you can search plenty of instances of this on Google, where instead of protecting students that did an excellent job of paving the pathway to infringing upon religious liberties, harming women and female sports, and also undermines policies already recently passed down by the Virginia Department of Education concerning these matters. In conclusion, I would urge you to spend really just less time focusing on matters that are already settled, and more time continuing to focus on what matters to parents, teachers, and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Mr. Sam Ray.
Good afternoon, York County School Board, my name is Sam Ray, I reside in District Two. I come to you once again to briefly speak to you on the subject of the name change of McGruder Elementary School, I will be short tonight. I believe on October 9th, you guys were all emailed a packet that contained some research that was done by Mrs. Mary Lassiter, and it contained a lot of research that I know she had to go through microfiche to find, that's how deep in the trenches she looked. So I would just ask that you guys, take this information, please look it over, discuss it amongst yourselves, discuss it with other historians, and my goal is to get this on the agenda this year for a vote. Everything that was presented to Obama, Mrs. Lassiter, will prove that that school, who that school was named after, and once you see that, I believe that you will find that you are in violation of your own policy, which is FFA, which states that no school should be named after a person living or deceased. Thank you, that's my comment.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Ms. Pam Puchel.
My name is Pam Puchel, I reside in District Four. God created hermaphrodites as well, and I do support the changes in the policy. At the last general meeting of the board, a woman from Pecosin, with grandchildren in our schools, was concerned they were being exposed to banned books. Recently, I was told it is better to remain silent about book banning, as it only incites those who want to control the reading choices of others. I watched several audience members nod in support of bans. Silence is consent, and I do not consent to the suppression of knowledge. That is how dictators arise and thrive, that is how ignorant lies so easily spread. The speaker acknowledged she did not even know the titles of the books she was complaining about, I doubt she's even read any of them, she was relying on an unknown people's comments without any basis in fact. Let me tell you about some of the banned books. The Diary of Anne Frank is considered inappropriate because a young girl coming into her teenage years has a crush on a boy while hiding from the Nazis. The obscenity is not her normal behavior, but in that a country elected a leader whose goal was to exterminate those who were not heterosexual Caucasian Christian nationalists. The obscenity is that she and her family, as well as millions of other Jews, died in concentration camps. But why want students to learn about genocide when they are exposed to the horrors of teenage hormones? And Tango Makes Three is based on a true story about two bonded male penguins who are given a fertilized egg to hatch, they become a family of three. Some believe the story has homosexual overtones and therefore offensive. Instead, maybe they should see it as loving parents successfully nurturing and raising their adopted child. Some believe Charlotte's Web must be banned, because talking animals are unnatural and blasphemous, and the death of Charlotte is way too disturbing. If so, let's ban Mickey Mouse, Donald Duck, and Bugs Bunny. Ban Bambi, because his mom dies at the beginning of the story. Even the Bible has been banned because of sexual references, murder, death, and destruction, and factual accuracy. Books about LGBTQ plus people, about history that is disturbing, about religions other than Christianity, racism, sexism, and normal teenage angst are the objects of most bans. I would prefer children read whatever they desire, and parents who have concerns should also read these books and discuss the pros and cons of the books together. Do not be afraid of your children learning about what it means to be different, about history that should never be repeated, about the fears of the process of just growing up. No one ever read a book and did not learn something. It increases vocabulary and critical thinking. A love of reading can last a lifetime and ensures the reader never stops learning. Book bans are the result of adult ignorance and falsely instilled fears. I truly hope that no book is ever banned in York County. Let each parent decide what their own child reads, not what others read. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have Mary Lassiter.
Good afternoon, good evening rather, I'm Mary Lassiter, and I reside in York County in the Bruton District, and my children and my grandchildren went to McGruder Elementary. I'm going to read an excerpt from my brother's letter that I submitted to the York County School Board in reference to changing the name of McGruder Elementary. My brother's name is Carl Lassiter. For the past six years, I have been told that McGruder Elementary, located on Peniman Road in York County, Virginia, was named in commemoration of the Lost Village located in the Bruton District of York County. I find this rationalization laughable. According to Donald Smith, an independent researcher and other scholars, the Lost Village was named in honor of John Bankhead McGruder, a Confederate general. McGruder is the general who ordered the city of Hampton to be burned down, and is responsible for the killing or capture of many runaway slaves at the beginning of the Civil War. After the Civil War, the unincorporated community of McGruder was primarily populated by former slaves and their dependents, and whites who settled there before the war. I have not found any literature or documentation indicating that the blacks who resided in what became, in what came to be known as McGruder, an unincorporated community, petitioned to name their community McGruder. No one in their right mind would believe that former slaves would name their community in honor of a Confederate general who fought to keep them enslaved, committed treason against the United States, and not only committed sedition against the United States, but shed American blood. I contend that a Confederate sympathizer recommended the name of McGruder for the unincorporated region/village. Based on the information I researched, a white postmaster was instrumental in naming the village of McGruder. There is no record showing that the black community played a role in naming the village of McGruder. All the documents that I viewed indicate the name McGruder was chosen because of the role John Bankhead McGruder played in the Battle of Williamsburg, May 5th, 1862, and his military prowess against the Army of the United States on the Lower Peninsula. And I hope that everyone in here, and the school board members, will face the truth. McGruder Elementary should be changed, and it is named after the general, and it is not named in honor of that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deb Wesley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Carroll. My name is Deb Wesley, and I live in District Four. I am proud to continue to serve York County educators as President of the York Education Association. As you are aware, one of the concerns that educators in York County have is restoring steps that were frozen several years ago. We realize the steps were frozen before any of you were in these positions, and two steps have been restored since Dr. Shandor has been our superintendent, and we appreciate those two steps being restored. We know many YCSD educators, both YEA members and non-members, want their other steps restored. We know the question has been asked and answered many times over the last several years about, when is this going to happen? However, as you can imagine, it is still a topic of concern for many YCSD educators that have stayed loyal to the division. I have many educators that share their frustration with me, that they are teaching with colleagues that have the same number of years' teaching experience as them, but the colleague is on a higher step, making sometimes up to $4,000 more a year. For example, a teacher with 20 years' experience who has been in York County for 20 years may be on step 16, and a newly-employed York County teacher with 20 years' experience may have been put on step 20. And that's just tough, that's just tough to understand why that happens. We would like to know, how many educators are still impacted by these steps that were frozen several years ago? And then really, what is the financial impact and implications of restoring even one step? I understand it, it's a financial nightmare probably to figure all of that out, but it would be interesting and go a long way in helping everyone understand this. This does affect our lifetime earnings, as well as the motivation to continue working in York County. I worry that we will lose the highly effective, talented teachers to surrounding divisions because they can make more money. And as the teacher shortage continues to impact York County, we need to make sure we are retaining the talented and loyal educators that have made us number three in the state. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Johnson.
Thank you, York County School Board, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Yvonne Johnson, I'm a homeowner in the Bruton District. My father was in the Army, so I did not attend a segregated school until I was in the third grade, and that was Frederick Douglass. I read an article in the Williamsburg-Yorktown Daily, printed March 1st, 2021, "What's in a Name: Community Torn Over McGruder Elementary's School's Namesake." The article stated that McGruder came The article stated that Magruder came from the name of a Civil War Confederate general, John Bankhead Magruder, who had defended the area against the Union's Peninsula Campaign. It went on to say that Magruder was such a revered legend in the community that they named a community after him. The community of Magruder, an informal hamlet of nearly 200 families, was settled mostly by African-Americans after the Civil War. Magruder families were forced to move in 1942 to make way for Camp Perry. There were two quotes from that article from members of the York County School Division. And am I allowed to say who they were or just say the quotes?
Just say the quotes.
Okay. The name Magruder pays tribute to the lost community of Magruder, not the man. The second was the school board chair, who said in an email on February 19th, "The school's name is a tribute to the fortitude of Magruder community, and we do not want to further displace it." I can assure everyone in this room, that is not true. The history of displacement has not been taught. And what the article failed to mention is prior to that, some of those people that lived there had already been displaced from the reservation. When Woodrow Wilson took the property in August 7th, he had proclamation, August 7th, 1918, to take the area that you now know as naval weapons, and that was the reservation. So some of those people that moved there were displaced a second time. The first time I heard my mother cry was when I was in the third grade, when I came here, and I went to a segregated school, Frederick Douglass, and it was after a PTA meeting. They had raised money for books for us, the children at Frederick Douglass. But she was crying because they had changed that and given the money to Magruder to buy books for the white students. The books that we got were the used ones that they sent over to us that had been written and spit on and had bubble gum stuck on them.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to read something actually from the Virginia School Law Desk Book regarding rules of the school board restricting speech at public meetings. And this was made April 15, 2016. It says, "Certain rules of school boards restricting the speech of speakers at public meetings violate the free speech rights of speakers. The board may not constitutionally bar speakers from discussing personnel issues or identifying school employees or officials during public session." Like I said, this was an opinion from the Attorney General, April 15, 2016.
Ms. Fairman, we have a policy in place, and right now, you and I, we can debate that offline, but right now, there is a policy in place that I'm trying to adhere to. So I'm going to adhere to that policy.
I understand, but policy does not override law. And when especially non-constitutional law.
Right now, okay, right now, as I chair this meeting, the policy overrides that. And we can debate that later, but right now, we're going to go with what I've decided. Okay, sorry. Let's continue. All right. Next speaker is Ms. Daniel, excuse me, Daniel Francis.
Hi there. Daniel Francis, District Two, proud York County graduate. My son, niece, and nephew are York County students. I'm going to continue with Ms. Johnson's. The name Magruder does not, has not, and will never pay tribute to the lost community of Magruder. This article from the Daily Press, published August 29, 1954, on page 47, shows a picture of the Magruder Elementary School with the caption. The original four rooms of the structure were built with a federal grant in 1951, but under a two-year bond issue construction program in York County, another six have been added and will accommodate 317 elementary children this term. It is located just south of Williamsburg on Route 168 and was named for a Confederate general. I ask you, why? If someone did not want their children to go to a school named after a black man, why would they want them to go to a school was named after Brent Higginbotham said, "As a tribute to the fortitude of the Magruder community"? I'm in full support of the renaming of Magruder Elementary School. York County has prided itself on including all of its students and all of its families. Inclusion means being mindful of names, words, and language that promote kindness and love, and make sure that every child and family is valued. Renaming Magruder Elementary School is important in that process. Another piece that is important in making sure all of our children and families are valued is the change in the language, because all students, y'all, it really means all. It means our LGBTQ community. It means the parents of those students, the parents of those students who are terrified. And I'd like to offer my services to anybody in this room and the school board, anybody in the community who needs education to stop the fear mongering. It is so harmful to the LGBTQ community, all of the fear mongering. Our folks are not threats to anybody. And actually, they're so terrified, they don't use public bathrooms. So whoever's child was afraid, please tell your child, don't be afraid. Our LGBTQ children aren't using public bathrooms. They're so afraid of being beaten up. They're so afraid of things being said to them, they're not in the public bathrooms. They're going to private bathrooms. They're not even going to school when they're anxious. So I offer my services to educate anybody so that we can really bring this community together in the way that we know is strong and inclusive and makes every single student feel valued and every parent feel heard, all of the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Robert Alexander. Mr. Robert Alexander.
Robert Bruce Alexander, District Five. I'd like to address the hysteria that has come over the servants on this board and its attendance of late, and the treatment of the servant of my district without naming names. In order to dispel some of the fear and intimidation deployed by some bad actors, I'd like to define some scary terms. Children not need to be scared. These words are only scary to certain adults. Political, relating to government or the public affairs of a country. If you're working for a government, you're political. If you're speaking in public, you're political. Relax. It's not a derogatory term. Half the members of this room, half the people in this room probably, are members of a militia. If you work for the school, if you work for the state of Virginia, you would know. But every resident between 16 and 55, able-bodied, is a member of the unorganized militia. Title 44, Article 1 spells it out. You could read it for yourself. But the governor has the right to call you up in a state of emergency. So get over the scary word militia. You're part of it. Indoctrination. This one should be very clear to educators. It's the process of teaching a person or a group to accept a set of beliefs uncritically. Now, that doesn't apply to everything that's taught in school, not math, maybe, but it's not a bad thing. It certainly would apply to things like English grammar. These are indoctrination. It's a good thing. You teach them the rules of grammar. But if you are teaching, you know, so parts of speech would be included there. So if you're teaching our children that they can declare their own pronouns, then you're teaching nonsense. Certainly, if you're teaching them that they can choose their own identity, you're indoctrinating the children in an evil ideology. Certainly, children should not be bullied by their teachers to choose a sexual orientation when they shouldn't be sexual at all.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Smith.
My name is Diane Smith, and I live in District Three. As educators and parents, our responsibility is not just to teach academics, but also to teach children what it means to be good citizens. In that effort, we teach our students history and government and encourage them to follow current events, even if they are not yet old enough to engage fully in our democracy. In current events right now, this weekend, former President Trump held an event in which he and his guests made vile racist remarks about Latino and black people. Since we encourage our students to track current events, and since even if we didn't, they all follow social media, many have been or will be exposed to the remarks from a former U.S. president and current candidate for president. I think it is critical that the school board issue guidance to faculty, staff, and students, reiterating what we already know. But I encourage you to make a statement that we, as a community, denounce racism and any who promote it, that any form of bullying with a racist component will be disciplined immediately, and that echoing or amplifying such hate speech will not be tolerated. On another subject, as a parent, one of my biggest fears is losing my child to illness, accidental death, or suicide. As you may know, the suicide rate among the LGBTQ youth is higher than that of heterosexual cisgender youth. What you may not know is that an LGBTQ+ youth with at least one accepting adult in their life reports significantly lower rates of attempted suicide. LGBTQ+ youth who live in a community that is accepting reported much lower rates of attempting suicide than those who do not. And I think I've shared before, I grew up in York County. I had a fairly idyllic life, loving parents and family. And I used to use the phrase, "Well, they're your family. They have to love you." And I was disabused of that notion when I became an adult fairly quickly. There are many people who were raised without people who loved them or with people who aren't supportive of them, and that is particularly true of children who are LGBTQ+. And our school system, just one person can make the difference between a parent losing their child to suicide or not. Just one teacher who shows them compassion can make a difference. And our teachers, I know, are willing to do that. I hope you'll let them.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Dr. Ellen Kennedy.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Ellen Kennedy. I'm a proud homeowner and resident of District One. I came here tonight to follow up on the vote last month on bullying prevention, the Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. It does seem fitting, given that a number of speakers tonight have made homophobic, transphobic remarks, supposedly in the name of religion. And I think it's important for us to double down on our policy of nondiscrimination, following the pretty basic proposal to expand our nondiscrimination policy to make sure that we are covering everyone in our district. That includes gender, gender identity. It includes sexual orientation. I have family members who are gay. I have family members who are transgender. And I am here tonight on their behalf as well, because love is love. Love is love. So I think, so I was horrified last month when Ms. Linda J. Fairman, Ms., I'm sorry. The courts have been pretty clear on that, Madam Chair.
This is not a position to argue with that.
The courts have been very clear that there's a First Amendment right.
We're not doing that. We're not doing that.
To do, Madam Chair, this is a constitutional right, the front of the First Amendment, freedom of speech.
This isn't about Constitution right now. We can talk about that later.
This actually is, this, my public comment.
Please refrain from using specific names. That was asked in our policy, and until the policy is revised and by the board.
Of my public comment with regard to your policy.
Our policy does conform with the First Amendment. It says you cannot address an individual person. You can say a name, but you cannot address them. And when you pointed to Ms. Fairman and looked at her, you were addressing her in a way. However, you can't address someone, but you can address the board as a whole.
I was not addressing Ms. Fairman. I was simply stating the fact that I was horrified that Ms. Fairman voted no on the Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. It was a four-to-one vote, and Ms. Fairman voted no. I think that is, that is very problematic. I think that Ms. Fairman needs to explain her, the reasons why she voted no on Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, given that we, that there are many, that there is, there's an open question of whether our county is going to support the rights of everyone who goes to school here, particularly in light of the nondiscrimination policy. So I think it's, I think it's appropriate for Ms. Fairman to address the reasons why she voted no on that. I think, I think this community also deserves an explanation on why Ms. Fairman continues to refuse to sign the Code of Conduct for the school board and wrote N/A on when everyone else signed their name. Thank you.
Thank you. I now close the public participation comments of citizens, and we'll move forward with our agenda. All right. And thank you, everybody, for the most part. I thought that was pretty simple. All right, we're going to move into matters by board members. I'm going to ask each of our board to just share some general remarks or whatever you want. We'll start with, start with Mr. Pyavich this evening.
Madam Chair, thank you so much for this opportunity to share some of the reports and where I have been participating and doing the past 30 days. First, I would like to share committee report on New Horizon. We had a special session on September 26th where we discussed contract for the new position for the new director. And following that, we actually hired the new director. So I'll be reporting this to the, to the board that we have a new executive director for the New Horizons. And I would like to actually introduce her to the. And I would like to actually introduce her to the our community. I would just share email that was shared with me by Dr. Royce Hart. "New Horizon Regional Education Center appoints Dr. Marcia Cale as Executive Director." "New Horizons Center is proud to announce that appointment of Dr. Marcia Cale as its new executive director. Dr. Cale, a highly respected and visionary leader in the field of education, brings a wealth of experience and a commitment to fostering student success, collaborative leadership, and innovative academic strategies. Dr. Cale will officially start on Tuesday, October 15, 2024." "With the background that spans 20 years in both administrative and classroom roles, Dr. Cale has built a reputation as a creative education leader, academic visionary, and community builder. Her leadership style is rooted in a student-first philosophy, emphasizing a collaborative environment involving board members, community leaders, administrators, teachers, and parents. She said that she is honored and excited to join New Horizons, and she looks forward to working alongside an exceptional team of educators and staff to build one of the strong foundations in place and create even greater opportunities for students. Dr. Cale is dedicated to enhancing school culture through strategic planning and problem-solving and academic programming, which optimizes learning outcomes. She is known for her effective communication, praises budget development, and ability to identify and utilize educational resources while nurturing cohesive terms. Her career in education includes significant leadership roles, serving as Director of Secondary Institution, Director of Curriculum, Professional Learner in Career and Technical Education, Elementary Principal, and Middle and High School Assistant Principal. Dr. Cale holds a Doctor of Philosophy in Educational Leadership from Old Dominion University, where she was recognized as the Outstanding doctoral student of the year and a National UCEA D.L. Clark Scholar. She also holds an Education Specialist in Educational Leadership, a Master of Education in Supervision and Leadership, and a Bachelor of Science in Liberal Studies. She is a well-rounded individual that I believe that she's going to do really well leading the New Horizons and our students. Following that, I had a CTE advisory meeting on October 15th. We discussed, actually, we had a presentation of the CTE promotional video that is still in the process of being developed, which soon as we get it cleared, we're going to be able to publish it on our website and share with the parents. And I think it's very important for all our parents to know what we, as a school division, do and help out with CTE education. We have the mock interviews coming up for York High School. It's going to be on October 24th, 25th. Grafton High School is going to be November 13th and 14th. Bruton High School is going to be November 18th and 19th. Tapp High School is going to be December 4th and 5th. And at York River Academy, December 10th. So I would like to invite all of you, my fellow board members, to volunteer and participate, go to your schools. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity to connect with the students and share some of our experiences through those mock interviews. We went through the federal monitoring audit, and it was performed and completed. It was found that the CTE program is in compliance. And also, I would like to bring that to attention, I'm not sure to who, but CTE meetings are not listed on York County website. So we just need to look into that. Now, as far as the other things that I'd done, was there was a school safety meeting at Sheriff's Office, which we all participated. It was one of the most educational sessions that I had. I have boys in high school, and I stress to them all the time the importance of being cautious of what we post and how we behave, because we had a horrible beginning of the year with a lot of different threats, not just from within the system, but like outside of the country that were being reported. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Shandor, Dr. Carroll, and everybody else in staff, and shares department, actually, for working so hard and diligently to keep our students safe. We, let me see. I visited Grafton High School for Family Back to School Night. And I just want to share with you guys how amazed I am by our teachers and staff. It was late in the day. They took a time to sit down with all of us, parents, go through their program, introduce themselves, go actually through the lessons that our kids are learning. And they were still ready for the next day for their classrooms, for the teaching. I just, I know how hard it is to work late because of my field, my work. And I cannot just, I just want to say thank you to them for their commitment and hard work. Next, I went to Bruton High School for the marvelous playbill. Me and Mr. Schaefer, we were there with, it was just an enjoyable evening to see students prepare the play without any props. There were just three benches, right? That's it. And they were, they were able to explain, express the motions that entire audience was able to connect and actually visualize the play. It was just an amazing project. And I just want to say to everybody who was involved in that, and if you see them, tell them my name. Me and Dr. Shandor, we went to the New Horizons to meet with the new executive director, Dr. Cale. During that time, we visited the criminal justice classroom, where we saw the live demonstration by our students of handling threatening situations that police officers, they find themselves, I would say, in daily situations, how to make those decisions and think quickly. It was just eye-opening how our students can actually, I don't want to say pretend, but actually act as police officers. It was just a good experience. We visited Welding Lab, where our students were performing really good. They were preparing for some work on on some competition pieces. At the time of our visit, they had the blood drive by Red Cross. So half of the school was in a line to give and donate blood, which was amazing to me. And some of them were first-time donors, and nobody told them that they can faint. I was like, "Anybody fainted yet?" "No, nobody did." But they were brave. They were really brave. So if any of you students were in there, I just want to say thank you. They just done an amazing job. And it's great to see them to donate their blood for better and greater cause. We saw the body shop, firefighting department, the students, and automotive technology. The last thing that me, Dr. Shandor, and Chairwoman Goodman, we visited Coventry Elementary School. And we saw a play that entire school participated in. And it was Superman stands up. And it was due to the Bullying Prevention Month that we have. I did not know that we have such a great choir in elementary school. They were singing Katy Perry's song, and it was just, I got goosebumps just listening to them, how much of energy and power they brought up in that performance. So with that, I just want to say thank you to actually well-organized performance by Ali Kevidakis, Christina Wallace, Claire Galan, I believe. I'm not sure if I get the last name right, but also the principal, Mrs. Joama. With that, I'm concluding my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we will move on to Ms. Fairman.
Thank you very much. Some of the different things going on on October 8th. I participated in going to the Special Ed Advisory Committee meeting. And it was very informative. And it was wonderful seeing so many parents there, along with faculty and staff, for all of the new things. They gave a lot of updates coming up. One of the things they said that was very helpful is a video called Evaluation and Eligibility. And they were encouraging parents to see that. I wanted to thank Mr. Patel for offering to be the chair. They're still looking, I believe, for a vice chair for CEAC. And you can see the agenda for upcoming times and dates. They went over in detail, Ms. Hopkins did with a presentation along with the staff, for the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program and the different changes with that. Very detailed. And I would suggest going, going to see if you can see that presentation again for that particular information. I was taking a lot of notes while everything was going along with this. One of the things that was really interesting, that's unique, I believe, for York County, and I knew this when I was teaching in the classroom, is that we focus and start first with the general curriculum. And it's one of those things that we always assume competence. And then if we see that different supports are needed, then we go in and look at those supports in order to help those students gain the best that they can from their educational experience. And it was interesting, they, some of the sources are used with this is the IEP, the evaluation data, eligibility, and other information that supports the decision. And it's a team effort with the teachers, the administrators, guidance, the parents, and the student along those lines, so that they can learn to the best of their ability. And with always the idea of helping when they need it and encouraging them, you know, to be included and doing everything. And it was just a very wonderful meeting with all of that. I encourage any of our parents of special ed students to please consider joining the Special Ed Advisory Committee, or at least coming in to observe the meeting, ask questions. There's a Q&amp;A near the end that we discuss some of the important issues for particular parents. And a lot of times, what one parent says, another parent will say, "Well, I have the same concerns." And so it was a wonderful kind of team effort there. Let's see. And I think that covered that, along those lines. Some of the other things. I wanted to congratulate all of the award recipients tonight, and especially for my district, Tab Elementary. That's wonderful, and District Five, for that recognition. Now, one of the things I'm going to be focusing on is academics. And anybody who knows me from teaching in the past knows that I was always looking at that, how to get the academics across. And one of the things looking at, I'll encourage people to go to the Virginia State Department of Education website and look up the school quality reports. And if you look at the assessments, you can see for three different years how the testing has come out overall for the state, as well as comparing to the state, the overall York County, and then individual schools within York County. And yes, we, across the board, pretty much, we're ahead of the overall Virginia State Assessment evaluations. However, there are some that I'm concerned about. In looking at just the reading test, and I was just looking at that yesterday and today, for the YCSD Division whole, overall, for that reading for this year, 2023 to '24, actually the end of last year, overall, we had 87% achieving. However, when you look at that, that means 13% aren't. I don't know about you, but I want to make sure that we get that closer to 100% achieving, seeing what we can do. I'm concerned because as you break it down, and you can see all of this on the school quality report, you can see the different demographics. And unfortunately, overall in the division, the Black students, 75% are achieving. And that's great. But that also means that 25% aren't. And I think we need to start focusing on how we can get those students achieving more. Hispanic was 85% are achieving, 15% aren't. Special ed is concerning to me, especially being on the Special Ed Advisory Committee and teaching in inclusion classes when I was here full-time, as well as subbing and doing homebound tutoring. 57% are achieving. That means 43% of our special ed students are not achieving in their reading. And that's concerning to me. The economically disadvantaged, 75% are achieving, but that means 25% aren't. And the English language learner, and I understand that they're still learning English, 55% are not, are achieving, but that means 45% aren't. York County is a great school division. I've taught here. I know what it's like in the classroom and how wonderful it is. But we can do better. And I think we need to be helping all of the students rise in their achievement. And so that's going to be one of the things that I'm working on because, I don't know about you, but are you okay with those high numbers, you know, double digits not achieving? And it's, when you start looking at some of the individual schools, it's still that issue. And so I think we can do better. And I'm looking forward to working with the administrative team, as well as the schools, to see what we can do to bring this up and what help that they need and what help we, as a school board, that we can bring to the schools, the parents, the teachers, and especially the students to help them achieve. And I believe that covers, oh. One other thing I wanted, there was a question that came up during the public comment period regarding the book banning. The issue isn't about banning certain books. The issue is about age-appropriate books. And we all know there are some books that high school students and college students can read and look at the pictures and things like that. And because they're older, they can handle that. They are not appropriate for elementary or middle school students. We need to keep that in mind. This is not about banning the books. If we were banning the books, that would mean the parents couldn't go out and buy them on their own. They couldn't get them from the public library or whatever. These are for the books in individual schools. If they are found to be age-inappropriate, we need to make sure that we are following those guidelines because unfortunately, some of these books, and we've seen it happen in some of the other counties, that the issue is whether you're looking at the graphics or you're reading the actual descriptions, they actually fall under pornography issues that we can't allow minors to see. If you need a rating system for movies or a rating system, I've seen it on some TV shows, we need to keep that in mind with the books. We're not about banning the books. We're making sure that they are age-appropriate for those particular students. And so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is it okay if I go next? I'm going to go next. Normally, I go at the end, but tonight I'm going to go next. In the interest of time, I'm going to hold off giving you my GEAC committee report because we'll do those committee reports next month. I do want to address the little, the comment about law versus our policy. Okay, if our policy doesn't butt up right with what is listed in law, what we will do, and what we are going to do, is we're going to take that policy and we're going to revise it so that it falls in line. And I think that it would be perfect for Ms. Fairman to take that on and bring us something maybe by the boardwork session so that we could tweak it as necessary, so that we run into these things again. So I just wanted to put that out there, that will be addressed. The other thing, I just need to comment on something Ms. Fairman said. Yes, 87% are achieving, 13% aren't achieving. And we want all kids to achieve. We want, we'd love to get to 100%. That'd be wonderful. And, but I have to say, you know, you say that you are looking forward to working with administrative team to help schools achieve. How do you do that when you don't go to your schools? When you don't go into the schools to see what these teachers and what these people are doing to help these kids achieve? I've spent countless hours in all the schools, watching and looking to see that. They're doing everything, above and beyond. And yes, we can't rest on that 87% and say, "Oh, we're good. We're not doing anything." That's not happening. I can tell you that's not happening because I've spent hours, and I work two jobs outside of school board. But I find time to go to those schools so that I can report back to you and tell you what is going on in those schools. And I'm amazed. I'm blown away. That's not to overshadow or cover up and say that, "Oh, you know, we're great. We're great," and all that. We are great. And we do know we have more work to do. But I'm going to tell you, as a person who's in those schools all the time, across But I'm going to tell you, as a person who's in those schools all the time, across the whole, the whole school division, these teachers, administrators are working their tails off. There's not one child that they let try to slip through the cracks. And if somebody's at a deficit, they're in there right of way trying to help them. And you all know, you know the odds and the things that we deal with, just in general, the society limited funding and all these other things. So I just want you to rest assured that we are not just sitting back and saying, oh, 87% is good, you know? No, they're constantly working. And I know that because I'm out there all the time. And I would ask you to ask your individual school board representative, how often are you in the schools? What are you seeing on the ground? Because I know in leadership, one of the most fundamental ways to find out what's going on is called management by walking around. That's how you find out what's going on. That's where you see the real work happening, okay? I did it as a manager, as a director, as a leader, and I'm doing it as a school board chair, okay? So I challenge you to ask that question. It's a very important one when somebody throws out numbers and statistics, okay? And says, I want to work with leadership. That's a great thing. How do you do it if you're not in the schools? Okay. With that said, I want to tell you about what I have done this last month. It's been a busy month, nonstop activity, as you know. As you get into the school past September, things really ramp up, and then they go at warp speed as we get into the holidays. So it's been a month of nonstop activity. I visited, I'm happy to say as of today, I've visited all 19 schools in the division since assuming the role of chair. This month, I completed visits to the northern part of the county, which included McGruder Elementary, Queens Lake Middle, Bruton High School, and School of the Arts, known as SOA. I made a special effort to check out the bathrooms at Bruton High School, and even had my picture taken in the newly renovated bathrooms, as Mr. Schaefer has been talking about these bathrooms since I first got to know him in January.
They are gorgeous, aren't they?
Yes, they are gorgeous. I attended my first high school pep rally at Grafton High School and my first elementary costume dance at York Elementary School. I was able to stop by and see the Fall Festival at Seaford Elementary School and visit my old stomping grounds at Dare Elementary School, where I was a counselor back in the early 2000. On Friday, I saw a fantastic bullying prevention play, as Mr. Pyavich told you about, put on by Coventry Elementary School, that focused on empowering kids when it comes to bullying. It was great to see how the entire school worked together to make this performance so successful. And one of my many highlights through this last month was seeing so many familiar faces from the years I worked in the division and catching up with former colleagues. That says a lot about longevity, so we still have a lot of the same people that I worked with back in my time in the county in the early 2000s. So I thought that was, that was really impressive, and I enjoyed that. As well as visiting the schools, as I said, it's a lot of talking with administrators, teachers, looking at all things when you go into a school, you know? How's, how's the school look? What's the culture like? What's the vibe like? What's safety look like? You're looking at everything. And I'm happy to report, while we're not perfect, we look really good. And all 19 schools are looking really good, clean, good vibe, hardworking people. You can tell a lot when you walk through a door and, you know, the culture of that school, the climate at that school. And I'm happy to report, it is good. In addition, I met with our County Board of Supervisor Chair, Mr. Roan, and he and I, earlier this month, finalized the agenda for our joint meeting that we will have tomorrow night. And then last but not least, I'll be attending on Friday the ceremony recognizing Bethel Manor Elementary School as a blue ribbon school. So that is my report. It's been busy. I do for a little rest. Thank you. And next, we'll have Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. I'll make mine as brief as I can. I know we're, don't want to be here too late. But I'd like to say congratulations to those schools that earned the Exemplar Performance Award, Seaford Elementary and TAB Elementary. That was a great job, what they did. I did visit several schools a couple of weeks ago in the Grafton area, and I'd just like to share that one of my goals my first year as chair on this board was to visit all of the schools at least once in the division. And I would like to commend Ms. Goodwin for accomplishing that task. It's, since she recently took over as chair, it's a, it's a big task to do, is 19 schools, and to try to find the time between work and everything to visit all those schools is, is difficult sometimes. I also attended the safety forum that we had last month at the Sheriff's Office, and we discussed some of those topics at our last work session. I had my monthly meeting with Supervisor Roan, he's my district representative in District Four, so I meet with him monthly just to discuss any issues that may come up. I attended the WHRO meeting last week as well, and also attended the Shark Tank at Dare Elementary School on October the 25th. The presenters in the fifth grade classes will identify a problem, come up with a solution, and present their ideas. And some of the ideas were making a wallet for their dare dollars and book holders for desks, water bottle holders, organizers for desks, and organizers for their chairs, just to name a few. But the, the kids that did the presenting did a great job, and it was just great to get in there. I'd seen it the last couple of years, and I went again this year to see that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least.
Say the best for last, that's right. Okay, well, everyone needs to be woken up just a little bit anyway, because I tell you what, the, I was going to lead off with Kim visiting all 19 schools, which is a feat in itself, so congratulations on that. But I got to attend the Bruton-TAB game with Vic Shandor. And Dr. Shandor, of course, went over to the TAB side, and I was on the Bruton side. And Bruton, I can't say they whooped them, but they handily won, okay? They won 14 to 10. So that was a good thing that Bruton has, has bragging rights. Not only that, but Bruton also won the Hovis Cup for York County, which is given to the, the school that has the best inter-district record. Also want to comment on the 87% that Ms. Fairman brought up. Yeah, 87% doesn't sound that great. We're failing 13% of the people. But we are in the top 5% of school districts in the state, top 5% of 132 school districts. So I don't think that's bad. And second, the 23-24 assessment, that was our first year out of COVID, okay? Do you realize how much learning was lost during COVID? And what were the two subjects that were hit the worst was reading and math, okay? Everybody up here knows that I am passionate about reading. The new literacy program came in, and it's going to be great. I don't think, I think we'll be above 90% pretty quickly in the next year or so. But, but for what we've been through with, with being closed down and everything else, kids in masks and everything else, how can you learn to read if you can't see your teacher enunciate words? It just doesn't happen real well. And we came through all that, and we're still in the top 5% in the state. So that's not too bad. I got to visit all four schools this month, which was very nice. I mean, that's the best thing to do is, if, if you don't volunteer in a school, you need to, okay? Because it will just fill your cup, or no, it's fill your bucket, isn't it, in the schools? Yeah, fill your bucket in the schools. And it, it definitely will. And you would be a rock star when you go in and read to some of these classes and stuff. School of the Arts, yes. Mr. Pyavich and I went to see, well, and his wife, went to see the Marvelous Playbill, okay? It was a one-act play that SOA put on, and they did it in the Bruton Theater, or the auditorium. And it was a precursor to them going to the state competition, okay? So they went to the Virginia Theater Association Conference in Richmond. And while they were there, the, now, mind you, they, they were all in costumes, yeah, the only props were three benches, okay? So they had to have a play around that. And it was, they won first place in lip sync competition. The students competed in scenic and costume design, monologue performance, playwriting, musical theater performance, one-act performance, and more. They won best costumes for the Marvelous Playbill. Students were specially selected to perform at the Tony-style Awards Banquet. And students were complimented throughout the conference for their professionalism. That's our students, and that's from all the schools, all the high schools, because SOA is representative of York County. They, the students also auditioned for colleges, and they got many callbacks during the time. I will tell you this, December 5th, put it on your calendar, that is the swing dance at Bruton. It is a big thing. You want to go. Anyone that likes the big band music and all, I mean, they have, they have faculty playing the instruments and stuff, it's great, and they're good. And the students dance, and, and it's, it's an awesome time, it really is. And they'll have food trucks there, so you don't have to worry about getting something to eat on the way up. You can eat there, and it's just a really, really fun evening. Oh, one other thing we need to do. Both Bruton and McGruder became Purple, Purple Star Schools. So now, all 19 schools in York County are Purple Star Schools, which means they really take care of their military students. Let's see. And I think that was it. All right. One more shout-out to York Foundation for Public Education. You saw a new trustee up here tonight. Y'all can be feeling free to join at any time, they would love to have you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Okay, at this time, I'll ask Mr. Richardson to discuss financial matters.
All right. So this is claims certified for payment for the month of September, and this is significant instructional-related expenditures that totaled 2.98 million. That included payments to AMN Healthcare, 25,000 for contracted speech services, Maxim Healthcare, 15,600 for nursing services, NearPod, 69,300 for annual renewal of interactive instructional resources, New Horizons Regional Education Center, 2.7 million, the bulk of what we spent for instruction, for tuition for the governor's school, for career and technical education school, and for special education programs. Peninsula Football Officials Association, 14,875 for football officials, Plan B Academy, 98,700 for Children's Services Act student tuition, CSOW Learning, 27,000 for elementary interactive instructional resources, the Fazeon Center, 30,600 for Children's Services Act student tuition. And payments for technology-related items totaled approximately 722,125. That included payments to CDW, 195,200 for annual support for network and wireless access point security, and Google licensing for 1,200 computers. Cox Communications, 20,200 for internet services, GoTo Technologies, 11,800 for remote support software, MCCI, 16,400 for microform data conversion, that's converting our microfile and microfish to digital format. And SHIC Communications, 90,300 for CC closed-circuit television support and replacement and of the intercom system at TAB Middle School. Virginia Business Systems, 20,125 for copier fleet lease, and VirtuCom, 368,100 for deployment of student computers. School nutrition expenditures totaled 533,925 and included payments to Alto Hartley, 318,475 for replacement of our cafeteria equipment, Sodexo, 204,700 for food service operations, and Cisco, 10,750 for food. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled approximately 2.1 million and included payments to ZBZ Associates, 893,760 for HVAC replacement at Mount Vernon Elementary. Thompson Engineering, 64,100 for A&E services for Mount Vernon and TAB Middle HVAC projects. Simpson Unlimited, 114,900 for Bruton High School roof replacement. Play Power Farmington, 194,335 for playground equipment at Dare Elementary School that we just had a ceremony at just the last month or so. Mid-Atlantic Installers, 136,675 for the replacement of fire and security system at TAB Middle School. Centennial Contractors, 658,000 for the locker room renovations at York TAB, York High School, TAB High School, and TAB Middle. We saw some pictures of those renovations at our last work session. ACES, 55,000 for HVAC controls and commissioning of TAB Middle School and Mount Vernon Elementary. And payments for operations totaled 224,670 and included payments to Demuth Services, 13,450 for HVAC repairs at Grafton Complex. Dominion Energy, 129,770 for utility services, and Inflow Communications, 300, 39,975 for software support to telecom systems, and Republic Services for disposal of solid waste, we paid 11,375. For WB Mason, 30,100 for custodial supplies. And payments for transportation totaled 272,270 to Kingmore Supply, that was for three buses. One was a 77-passenger, the other two were 55-passenger buses. Payments for administration totaled 45,680 to include payments to K-12 Insight, 35,600 for the LexTalk platform, and National Association of Federally Impacted Schools for annual membership was 10,080. And significant changes to the operating budget for September revenue. State revenue is approximately $3 million higher in September FY '25 than September '24 due to decrease in the local composite index, increases in enrollment, and increases in at-risk funding. Federal revenue is approximately $556,000 less than fiscal year '25 due to expiration of the SR stimulus grants. And expenditures for instruction are approximately $2.8 million higher in September of this year when compared to the previous year due to the $5.5 million increase was in salaries, increased health premiums, and additional positions that were added in fiscal year 25, 2025. And there were no significant changes in revenue for expenses of the school nutrition budget. Resolution 24-67 requires the board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and there are eight items on the resolution totaling 1.29 million, the details of which can be viewed on board docs. Madam Chair, I would like to now move for approval of financial matters as listed.
Is there any discussion?
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve financial matters as listed. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed 5 to 0.
All right, I'm going to go over the consent calendar. We have approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes for work session on September 9th, 2024, a regular meeting on September 23rd, 2024, a special meeting on September 26th, 2024, a work session on October 14th, a special meeting on October 22nd, 2024, a special meeting on October 22nd, 2024, and a special meeting, another special meeting on October 22nd, 2024. Approval of donations in the amount of $4,250. Approval of overnight field trips for the period of November 1st, 2024 through November 1st, 2025. Approval of stor, excuse me, student organizations and activities for the period of November 1st, 2025 through November, or 2020, I think this should say 2024 through November 1st, 2025. Approval of consent calendar as listed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a request that we pull out B, the approval of the different minutes to handle individually, mainly because while I attended the, the regular meetings and the work sessions, those special meetings were the, dealing with the personnel and the disciplinary issues that only three board members attended. And since I was not there, I can't say whether the minutes are correct or not.
You have, you can abstain.
Yeah, but that would be abstaining for all of them, and I can do it on the other ones. I can.
Madam Chair, we could just pull the, the three special meetings at the end and vote on that separately, and it might be quicker.
I'm okay with that. Let's pull the, let's pull the three special meetings and then have a separate vote on those.
So Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of B, the last three special meetings to be voted on separately.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve consent calendar with the exception of B, and we're separating the special, the closed-session meetings. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed 5 to 0.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consideration of the minutes, approval of Madam Chair, I move approval of the consideration of the minutes, approval of the minutes for the special meetings on the 22nd, the three meetings on the October 22nd, 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Howard.
A motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the special meeting minutes. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Abstain.
The motion passed 4 to 0 with one abstention.
Next, I need a consideration of approval of a proclamation for American Education Week November 18th.
Madam Chair?
Can I finish?
Actually, we need to do the minutes for the other meetings before you move on to it.
We already did that. We did that. We did that, and we separated.
Well, no, you did, you did the special meetings, not.
That was pulled out.
We pulled out the special meetings.
We pulled out the special meetings.
We voted on the other meetings.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
I thought you were pulling out the entire B, that's what I understood it. Thank you.
Consideration of approval of a proclamation for American Education Week November 18th through 22nd, 2024. Dr. Carroll, do you have any comments about the proclamation?
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. The annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools, and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education, and that each and every employee of the school division, be they teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day.
I need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation.
I would like to make a motion for consideration of approval of proclamation for American Education Week from November 18th through 22nd of 2024.
I'll second.
Any questions? Comments? All right, Ms. Howard.
The second was by Mr. Richardson, is that correct? A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the proclamation for American Education Week November 18th through 22nd, 2024. Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed 5 to 0.
All right, we do not have any policy discussion. We do have a policy first read, policy A, sorry. Did I miss something? Do you have the resolution?
2471.
What did I miss?
13B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consider, I'm sorry, consider, consideration of approval of Resolution 24-71, a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to reappropriate the FY '24 end-of-year fund balance. Sorry.
Mrs. Goodwin, I'd like to ask Chief Financial Officer Bill Bowen up to speak to this item.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we're asking the, the board to approve the resolution, which is requesting the Board of Supervisors to reappropriate the end-of-year, FY '24 end-of-year fund balance. Our audit is almost complete, we've identified a balance of about $2.2 million. Of that, the, about $1.3 million is, has been identified as obligations that need to carry forward into FY '25, they're in the body of the resolution. We have about $975,000 that's unobligated balance, and we're asking for the board to approve those items. One is to $47,000 to be used for the purchase of an IT van, $250,000 to be transferred to the capital improvements program, and $620,508.50 to the health and dental plan. And this, approving this this evening also directs the superintendent to forward this resolution to the county administrator.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion for, for approval of Resolution 2471, a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to reappropriate the FY '24 end-of-the-year funds balance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Howard.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you, I can't see people's mouths.
Mr. Schaefer.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 2471, requesting the Board of Supervisors to reappropriate the fiscal year '24 end-of-year fund balance. Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed 5 to 0.
Okay, now, policy discussion, we don't have any immediate policy discussion. We do have a policy first reading. Policy A, foundations and basic commitments. Ms. Berry, you want to make any comments on Policy A?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. There are some revisions since the original policy put forth for discussion, and those changes were posted on board docs. For Section AC, we have been able to confirm the date of adoption, thanks to Jen Test who went down to the basement and dug through things. So June 20, 1988 was the date of adoption for Policy AC. Let's see, additionally, as to AC, I wanted to point out, which I did not point out during the discussion, our Policy JB, which is the Student Nondiscrimination Policy, already has those changes in it. The board adopted the additional language back in February 28th, 19, 2022. So that language has been in place for the division, applicable to students for over a year now. Section AD, I did make some additional changes based on the board's input, and then today I received information from Mr. Pyavich that adds a few more words. So for Policy AD, it would state, "The school board is committed to providing every student the opportunity to achieve significant," that's the word that Mr. Pyavich added, "intellectual, social, emotional, and physical growth, and to ensuring each student is equipped to communicate effectively, to be competent both in the workplace and higher education, and to feel confident of the ability to make creative and constructive decisions." And another change, Mr. Pyavich's suggestion, was removing "with other people" as to communicating. And then, the next section would have, "The school board provides the necessary trained and dedicated leadership, qualified personnel, equipment, and materials to assure the opportunity and support of an appropriate education for every student." Mr. Pyavich has added the word "support" in that section. "Treats all members of the school community with respect, and allocates and uses assets fairly and efficiently." So those are the revisions to AD.
Any questions?
Just one. Ms. Berry, will you be able to reprint that and send that out to the board members so we can review that in this week? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyavich, for those adjustments.
And now, we have Policy BDD, the Electronic Participation at Meetings from and At Locations. Dr. Carroll, do you have any remarks on that?
Yes, there's been no changes since discussion.
Policy second reading, we don't have any that requires any action, and so now we'll move into the report of the superintendent, and Dr. Carroll will now turn that time over to you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Goodwin. Dr. Shandor just wanted to extend the same congratulations to both Seaford Elementary and TAB Elementary's for their Exemplar Performance Awards. He also enjoyed attending the Virginia Board of Education meeting this week, where the board recognized all the Virginia recipients of the National Blue Ribbon, and as you know, it's at Bethel Manor for us. He attended with Christina Head, Associate Director of Elementary Instruction and Academic Programs, Bethel Manor Principal Chrissy Wagner, and Teacher Representative Haley Mini. And we also look forward to the Purple Star official awards next week, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much. We are now in need of a couple of closed sessions. Can I please have a board member make a motion to take us into closed session?
I move that York County School Board convene in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Consideration and discussion regarding prospective candidates for appointment to the Special Education Advisory Committee and Career and Technical Education Advisory Committees. As the matters addressed in closed session are confidential, no minutes or recordings are permitted.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the school board going into closed session as stated. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passed 5 to 0. We are now in closed session.